Welcome, everybody, to this emergency board meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Turn this over to Mr. Jones and then record reflect all board members present.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Welcome to everyone. We appreciate your participation in this meeting this afternoon. Starting today's meeting, you know we had a meeting earlier today with constitutional officers and a number of other have just a frank discussion about where we move forward. Bottom line is, we want to make sure that we stay as far ahead of this crisis as we can. Make some recommendations to the board. May be aware of comments. So while we wait on that, Mac, do you have those meetings and dates? Can you hear me? Is it breaking up any? No? Okay.
I checked. Got mine.
Hello? That working? All right. Maybe I moved too far away. Can you hear in the back? All right, so the first thing we want to recommend to the board is that we declare a local state of emergency, which will relax the procurement requirements, which will provide for reimbursement from FEMA, provides flexibility in canceling nonessential public meetings.
Motion to declare a local state of emergency.
Second.
Second.
Motion is second. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, Commissioners, in front of you, you have a list, and we're gonna do a number of these together for sake of time, but we're recommending that we suspend all employee out-of-county travel without special permission from the Director and Administration. We cancel and suspend all permitted outdoor events and beach activities ordinance, special events. We suspend the rental of all county facilities. End driving on the beach permits until August the first. And then begin driving on the beach lottery process on June the first. That we extend beach dog on the beach permits by eight weeks. Take no new permit applications accepted until June first. And I'll stop there, and we'll talk about it separately. Our idea is to minimize the contact with the public and staff to the best we can. We want to serve the public. We want to make sure we take care of their needs. But we believe most of these things are issues that will provide some protections to our county staff and citizens.
Counsel, we are taking motion for items number two through six. Is that motion reference to items two through six?
Items two through six?
Second.
Public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Jones?
And to that end of the items you approved, we want to introduce our new Director of Code Enforcement. Code Enforcement is going to play a big role in making sure this is followed, or they are followed, and we're going to have some special requirements somewhat stand. Bring Tony up, or Tony, just stand up. If you want to say a few words, you're welcome to.
Future dates, Corbin, come to the podium to speak.
It'd be a good day to practice.
First, I'd like to thank every one of you for the opportunity. As Mr. Chad says, I started my professional career here in Walton County, and it's just a privilege to be back and hopefully finish up my professional career here in Walton County. Myself and my wife are both from Walton County, so we have ties here. We love Walton County.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
So we will be going over a number of these things with Tony and his staff. For instance, if cancel an event at We Care Park, we want them to know the day and the time and make sure that it's followed. Right, number seven is to continue the following board following planning meetings to the following dates. That would be the last sheet handed out to you that has the highlighted lines. Primarily what we're doing are taking everything that we can practically and logically move to the month of May and take action today to continue those, as some of them have been advertised. And if we move to continue, we will protect that advertisement. But again, that will cut down on the number of large gatherings and number of people at one place. So those are before you, the meetings as they are scheduled, and the dates that we're looking to reschedule them to.
Counsel? Well, as it's motion, do they need to just identify each one of them that's highlighted here for the motion, or?
It's all of them, and the date we're moving it to is in the last column of dates, Commissioner.
Motion on moving these dates?
Right, to continue these meeting dates as reflected in this table?
So moved.
Second.
Second, any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item for your consideration is to cancel all other volunteer boards and committees until May first.
So moved. Second.
Second, any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And while no action is required, we would ask the board to recommend all citizens and visitors and businesses follow the directives and recommendations set forth by the Centers for Disease Control. That would just be a And finally, just for knowledge purposes, admin will be working with all of our county departments and all of our county staff to facilitate their needs, primarily for their safety, for their limit the contact where we can provide whatever needs they may have that provides that safety for their staff and their visitors. Admin working through our county staff.
Mr. Jones, does that include allowing employees to have issues working from home?
Absolutely. It'll be all-inclusive. You know, we'll be glad to have the directors intend to have the directors have an understanding of their people, what their needs are, those that can work from home, and it makes sense to do so, to make that available.
So, or do we need to do any action to give the either you or the director the authority to work with someone who doesn't have enough sick leave and they're sick?
That would be part of our plan, but if the board would like to take action, we will know that everybody's in support of that. Okay, yeah. We're gonna, we're gonna do our best to protect the staff and cause the least interruption in their life as possible.
Board members and the public, this state of emergency was entered to the day it's good for seven days. Happens to coincide with our board meeting.
Seven days.
Seven days is what it's good for. Can you hear it now? Okay. Try not to move the mic. Anyway, so every seven days, we have to either allow it to dormant or reinstitute it. So here's the reason I mentioned that. Address it again next Tuesday on the 24th, I believe it is. We're two weeks out from there, but the ordinance that we have in place will allow me or the county administrator to extend it an additional seven days. So just wanted to let you know that it's not going to expire anytime soon. Either board action or mine or Larry's action will continue to the future. Is there any staff member out there that wishes to make some type of comment or recommendation to the board?
Then this is your opportunity to maybe remind us of something we haven't thought about. So if any of the staff has a thought you'd like to share with the board, feel free to. If it's something you want to deal with admin, you know where to find us, and we're available anytime.
Unfortunately, I found out this week that seventy years old is not middle age. So any of you out there that have older family, older friends, your moms and dads, your grandparents, keep them home. People my age and older need to self-quarantine. It's, I have a heart condition. It's easier for me to get sick, so Danny's wife has a heart, same thing I have, so please alert your family members and your friends that are older than middle age, which is older than seventy. But stay in. Don't go out unless you have to. Get your kids to buy your groceries. This thing is, you don't know who has it. There's a lot of people out there that never show any symptoms, but it seems to attack the elderly. So please have your family and friends that are up in age to be very, very careful.
Old or Mr. Goldberg, would they like to?
All right, as Jeff comes up, I do just want to clarify that we continued the planning meetings. That was item number seven. Sorry, sorry if you can't hear me. So on this table that we have, it mentions the regular BCC meetings. Not been continued. We're still going to hold those regular meetings as of now. It's just that the planning items that were advertised for those dates would be continued. Sorry for not catching that sooner.
If you will stand aside a minute, Ms. Holly Holt. Now, this, if you've been paying any attention to what's been going on, this thing changes from day to day, and I think you've given me at least three updates since Friday. So we had one earlier this morning, the discussion, is there any change in the last four hours? Okay. You got anything you wish to make, comment about concerning this, Ms. Holly?
Well, the numbers are increasing for the state of Florida, so I will read this to you. Last night, we get reports probably three or four times a day. As of 2:20 this afternoon, as of 1:20 our time, there's 131 confirmed cases in Florida. And there's been four deaths. So that is an up-to-date number for cases in Florida, and that has increased probably doubled since last Tuesday, Wednesday. But we still have no cases in Walton County right this minute.
Holly, could you see me after the meeting?
Yes, if I could. You've heard the action that the board's taken. Is there anything, any suggestions you would have on any other action that would be beneficial to what we're trying to do?
No, I think, I think one of the things that people need to know is that we have been working very closely with healthcare providers, the healthcare, like Healthmark and Sacred Heart Hospital, some of the local physicians. That community meeting last week, which was very beneficial. I still am hearing from the community that there's information that they don't know about, and they're unsure, so Jeff is pulling together our JIC this afternoon, which are the POs from the different agencies, work together and start really funneling some information out there into our community. So I think that's going to be very beneficial for us. But for most people, just being patient, as, as things happen from day to day, this is brand-new for everybody. We all have basic plans that we have that we can adapt as we go. When we get finished with this, we're going to be so experienced between hurricanes and health issues. It'll be a breeze from now on, but for right now, the patience with everybody, we have a lot of people that call us. They are very, very upset because we cannot test according to the new screening algorithm that actually came out earlier this morning. It's not a lot different from what's been going on, but as you've read the news and you see on national news, increase in testing available for the community. We're going to be working with our local community about how to do that. It's still in the planning phases. We do not have that information yet. As soon as we get that worked out, we will let you know, and then through the JIC, that will be circulated out into the community.
Chairman, just one comment, Holly. This room, we're probably may be right at fifty here. Is fifty the number of the max? All right, we need to think about that. I don't know how we're going to adjust that as we, as we all meet, because we still have these BCC meetings. We need to consider somehow to control near the fifty, because we are probably over fifty right now.
Okay. Jeff Goldberg, Emergency Management Director, for the record. Yeah, these numbers just came out. They're, we're getting, we're going to be getting updates at noon our time, 11:00 a.m., noon every day from the state. We get a situation report from the State EOC that goes over what counties have local states of emergency. That number's increased since I briefed this morning. The same thing with what emergency operations centers are at a level-two partial activation. We are at a partial activation. Most of it's being done virtually, because we want to try and limit the amount of people we put into one room. And a partial activation is defined as monitoring an active event and engaging with certain partners. So ESF-8 Health and Medical, ESF-18 Business and Industry, firefighting and EMS. And some of those agencies and organizations, we've been interacting for about the past week, week and a half, and obviously, the Public Information Unit is vitally important to this.
All right, thank you.
I got a question. Why the heck is everybody buying toilet paper? I could see run on food, run on hand sanitizers, Clorox, but toilet paper?
Nobody has an answer for that, unfortunately. But one of the things that we are doing, because we are experiencing shortages in commodities in the county. We don't necessarily have a supply chain issue. We're able to get stuff from point A to point B, but it's the actual commodities in the store. So through our Business and Industry Unit, which is the TDC, Emergency Management, Walton Area Chamber, the EDA, we're going to be reaching out to the, the business community to try and keep an eye on what commodity issues are. And some of the stores are starting to limit the amount of toilet paper, among other things, that, that they can purchase, which I think is prudent on the business, business side.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. Jeff, thank you. Okay, is there any public comment from anyone out there? See any? Ah, now, quick around here. Please identify yourself for the clerk. It's by your last name.
Heather Duncan, D-U-N-C-A-N. I'm a representative from AJ's. So, good afternoon, everyone. We just wanted to let you know, as a restaurant provider, that we have made our cleaning and responsibility towards the community. We have gone to all throwaway items. When you come into the restaurant now, we are not washing the cups. We're concerned with the virus, so we've gone to all throwaway. We're also going to be offering a menu that we can, you can order and pick it up, so you don't have to come in. We're also taking away our bar stools and keeping the six feet of separation, just for safety. Are open for business, and we'd just like you to know that that's what we're doing for the community.
Duncan, we appreciate that. I'm hoping the rest of the industry out there will pick up on that and go. If common sense is basically, if you got the flu, you try not to take it wherever you go. Stay at home. Wash your hands, all that good things. All those things has been out on the, in the media for weeks now. So I appreciate your efforts, and hopefully, the rest of the restaurant owners and eating establishments take the same position. Thank you very much.
I also would like to notate, too, the, try to put a positive spin on this. Just updated as well, you know, there have been 760 negative test results. So, you know, we all hear the, the negative, but the positive is, a lot of people are ill, but there are a lot of negative results out there. And if you look at the USA, you know, just updated, there's only 4,110 cases across the United States, and Florida only has 131. So if you do the math, you know, I feel like we're pretty safe in northwest Florida, but obviously, we're still taking precautions.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Jones, I think you have one.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, through our website, with the announcement of today's meeting, there were a number of comments provided to the board. One page by one, two, three, six different people. I can either read them to you, or I can provide you a printed copy, and you can read them, and if you wish, take action. We can work on it next week, but
Read them, but I want a printed copy.
Okay, would you like to take a ten-minute recess, and we'll print them, and you can read them, and if you want to comment on any of them, we can't, you already got them? Okay. And if you want to take a five minutes or so to read them, and then if you have any comments or response to any of them, is that acceptable, Mr. Chairman?
Take about five minutes. Let you scan.
And, Mr. Chairman, a couple of people are asking, because the video is so bad, could we please recap what we voted on, the first six items? Would you mind recapping those? I guess the people at home are having trouble with our breaking in and out.
When Jason, I mean, yeah, when Jason gets back, get this thing fixed or tear it out and put something new in here.
I'll go over that while y'all are reviewing that, if you'd like. I'll go over that while y'all are reviewing that, if you'd like. But the action the board has taken was to declare a local state of emergency, suspend all employee out-of-county travel without special permission from a director and administration, to cancel and suspend all permitted outdoor events and beach activities ordinance special events, suspend rental of all county facilities, extend driving on beach permits until August the 1st, begin the driving on the beach lottery on June 1st, extend dog beach permits by eight weeks, no new permit applications will be accepted until June 1st, continue following the planning meetings to the following dates. That list will be posted on the county website, and it'll tell you the meeting date as it is currently planned, and the date that the meeting has been continued to. Cancel all volunteer boards and committees until May 1st. Those were the things that the vote, board voted unanimously to accept.
All right, y'all had, I assume, an opportunity to read these, this submitted document with about six individual questions. Do y'all wish to address any of them at this time, or just make it part of the record? All right, is there any other comments from the board concerning this?
You, man, you must have been thinking along the same line. Young lady from AJ's prompted my thought when she came up. One thing that Governor DeSantis is in the process of doing is requesting from the president a Small Business Administration declaration, which what would, what we would be able to do with that is, businesses that have sustained economic injury due to this incident would be able to apply for low-interest loans to help kind of carry them over. Once we get more information on that, and if we do get the agency declaration, we'll go ahead and work through Business and Industry Unit to get that information out to the public and the businesses, to make sure that they know what they need to do for documentation in order to go ahead and, and verify their economic injuries and potentially get some loans to help carry them over.
Thank you.
As well as I do, most people younger than us get their information from Facebook. Can you make sure that the up-to-date information gets put on y'all's? So that we can get the right information out, because if, in the absence of the right information, it's a vacuum, and you get bad information.
You're absolutely right, sir, and that's what the Joint Information Center under Public Information Unit's gonna be working on, is making sure that messaging gets out, and working with the other agencies, Sheriff's Office, Fire Rescue, municipalities, to make sure that information gets out as well.
Bella for the record, Public Information Manager and horrible sound engineer, obviously. I have a meeting called with all the PIOs in the area for after this meeting. We'll be putting together a comprehensive press release of not only the actions that you did here, but working with the constitutionals, what they'll be doing for their offices in regards to the public and anything they're doing. We will certainly post that to the Facebook page for EM, it will be on the sheriff's site. We will all be working as one team to put all of this information together, and it will continue to work through the JIC, so anytime we have changes, all of us are making the same changes to one document and getting out that same information everywhere and as often as we can.
All right, thank you. Mayor Campbell, I know you missed the meeting this morning, do you have anything as far as what the city is planning on doing, other? No? Used to talking into a mic. Thank you, Mayor.
I don't know that this occasion will come up, but if we did need a meeting of some sort, and it's 50 or more people gonna be involved, would it be a problem to do it in a open amphitheater?
I would assume it'd be okay. The 50 is a recommendation, so.
I would think that was for maybe being enclosed, I know we, and so I don't know that we'll have that, but, you know, I'm thinking that if you had one that's very necessary, you know, and of course, you've got the big enough space, obviously, I think 50 people, or maybe even more than that wouldn't hurt, but in, in a building this size, a room this size, probably need to stay under that 50 mark and try to exercise space, which is hard to do sometimes with, without you giving strict orders or setting the chairs. I know if we were to do something like in the community center, we could actually set the chairs and tell them not to move them, you know, and have them, you know, five, six feet apart, but just in case we have a meeting, and I know it's really kind of our call, but I'm, I was leaning on them to hear what their, what Holly's comments would be on, on such a meeting, because this may go on for quite a long time, and I'm just trying to accommodate whatever we run into in the next few weeks, you know.
Thank you, Mayor. Anyone else? Seeing none. Board, this stuff is very fluid, it changes almost every few hours. Just remind you that in the event something major changes takes place, that I may be calling you to set aside another emergency meeting to discuss it.
If I might just say one thing, obviously, this is gonna be our priority from a staff perspective. That may mean some other things get pushed back a little bit, we're gonna minimize that the best we can, but we want to make sure that the things that you voted on today get top priority, and as, as we learn new things, we add them into the mix as well.
I'd like to commend Mr. Jones for being on top of this, and for being very responsive on a Sunday afternoon to all of us, so I appreciate all your hard work, and I think you're doing a great job.
Well, let me, let me deflect a little. I relied on Jeff and his staff, he was in contact with Holly and her staff, and that's what we do, and we're glad to do it whenever it needs to be done. Thank you.
It is Sunday, is that all you heard from him? I heard it from you Saturday.
Actually, Friday, I think, but anyway.
Started Friday. Started Friday, anyway.
He did a good job.
Nothing else to discuss? Ain't a motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourned.
We adjourn.